A work session on career technical education, which is scheduled to last about two hours. So, let's see if we can do that. We're already starting half an hour later than intended. And I think before we start with the presentation, we have one person who has asked to give public comment and has asked to go first. So, please.
Well, thank you for letting me go first. I appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Flynn and I am Associate Vice President for Strategic Partnerships at Portland State University, as well as the Executive Director of something called the Portland Innovation Quadrant. And I wanted to come here just for a moment of your time to share with you a little bit about the Innovation Quadrant and also to let you know how important we believe the connection is between PPS Career Technical Education and the IQ. So, the IQ is a priority strategy of the city of Portland to create a center of gravity in Portland's central east side that will really serve as the front door to Portland's innovation economy. And as you know, the central east side has historically been an industrial district, but it's quickly changing with new zoning and a lot of available land and buildings. So, there's potential for much greater density in the central east side. The IQ was established by four anchor institutions, OHSU, PSU, PCC, and OMSI, with a shared goal of bringing job creation, investment, entrepreneurship, and innovation to our city and to continue to grow our innovation economy. So, we established a board in early 2018. PPS has been a partner from the beginning. I reached out to Jeannie Gosh several years ago. We have four working groups: Career Pathways, Place Making, Real Estate and Business Development, and Startup Resources. Jeannie co-chairs the Career Pathways work group and she's been fantastic. We want to sort of thread CTE's five-year plan through the IQ and really embed what you're doing in this growing district. So, we're trying to figure out what the mechanics of that are and how we make that happen. And in particular, we're very excited about the revisioning of Benson High School and really asking the question, what does a 21st century career technical ed high school look like in the physical context of an emerging innovation district? That's really an amazing opportunity that we have to figure that out together with our developers, our school district, with our tech companies, and our healthcare institutions. What can we create together? So, I'm just here to lend support, to say we really want to work with you. We're committed to your CTE five-year strategy and we'd love to be actually built into the strategy if possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great session. You're welcome to stay. Okay, Joey?
Great, yes. Thank you so much. My name is Aurora Terry and I'm the new Senior Director of College and Career Readiness. And I know most of you possibly know Jeannie and she's been in the district for some time. She is the Director of CTE Career and Technical Education. And tonight, we wanted to give you a base, a foundational knowledge, an update of where CTE is in the district right now. So, we wanted to clarify some terms, give you new data that we have, talk about some new labor market information that came out. And so, I know from the board meeting earlier that there's a lot of bigger picture questions that are coming very soon. And so, we thought it was really important to give everyone a really strong foundation around where CTE is so that you will be informed to make the best decisions moving forward. And so, that's, I think, what spurred tonight. So, starting with the labor market data, we really focus on Oregon and then the tri-county area. So, the information that we're using tonight, so I think as Director Anthony often says, there's a lot of different lenses. You can look at CTE and so you can look at national trends. And what we really focus on for tonight are trends in Oregon and in the tri-county area. So, that's the information that we are using tonight.
Can you clarify what you mean by tri-county?
Yeah. Yes. So, tri-county would be Multnomah, Washington, and Clackamas Counties. So, it's the Portland metro area.
So, we're not looking across the river though?
Not tonight. The data that we have is all Oregon.
I've got that spreadsheet.
Okay.
Director Bailey also has some very interesting employment projections for the tri-state regions, Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. And he's shared some, plays with me in some book.
No, I don't do Idaho.
Well, so we're lucky to have an expert here at the table for, again, bigger views. So, there's lots of different lenses we can take. So, tonight, we're just really focusing in on Oregon.
So, I'm going to start with this information that was shared with us by the Oregon Employment Department. It's new information since June. So, what we know is that Oregon's total employment is expected to grow by 12% in the next 10 years, so between 2017 and 2027. And in Oregon, job growth, and we've just highlighted it to you, but it's private healthcare and social assistance. And what that means, social assistance is, I'm looking at Scott, like he can tell me all these things, is the wide range. So, it could be caseworker, it could be mental health, it could be hospitals, anything within a hospital. So, it's a very broad category. Construction, professional and business services, which is something new. This was not as high up when we were doing the CTE plan six, seven years ago, followed by private education, leisure and hospitality, and other services.
Can I ask what private education means?
So, that would include, it's largely, well, it's private schools.
Okay.
They're both universities, private universities, like Dulles and Parkland, they're in there, plus, you know, St. Mary's Central Campus.
Okay, so just, yeah, any?
You're right. So, most of education would be under local government?
Yeah.
Yeah. Some under state government.
Does private education include trade schools?
Yes.
Apprenticeship programs?
No, not apprentice programs.
But like a culinary school or?
Yeah, culinary school or something like that.
carpenters?
Yes, like this. Culinary institute.
Yeah.
Because they're a primary.
Oh, no. Okay.
No, because most apprentices would be counter unemployed because they're working and schooling at the same time.
Thank you.
So, job growth in the Portland tri-county area is a little bit different. So, you can see management of companies, transportation and warehouses, professional and business services, private health, private education, and construction. So, it looks just a little bit different for the metro area than it does for the state of Oregon overall. This is also projected job openings in the next 10 years. And what we've given you here is really what the employment was in 2017 and what the expectation is with job openings in 2027. But what I really wanted to point out here is that there is a wide variety of typical education for entry-level employment. So, bachelor's degrees, associate's degrees, post-secondary training. And so, this is a little bit different as well from the things that we were looking at when we were building out our CTE program when we started seven years ago.
So, good. Two things quickly. This is high school diploma more and more required. So, a lot of the entry-level jobs that don't require that.
Right.
The other thing is it's job openings new and replacement. So, any occupation where there's a lot of turnover, like truck driving, long-haul truck driving is notorious for that, will show up high on the list, more for turnover as opposed to a growing industry.
There was a question Director Graham Edwards asked about how much the salary raises with the more education that you have. And this is just an example that we got from our employment department. And you could see that no high school diploma is at $13 an hour, with a diploma only $17.80. Some college, no degree, 19, 35, two years, 20, almost $21 an hour. And a four-year or degree or higher is almost $32 an hour.
So, what's? Thank you for providing that. It'd be great to get that.
Yeah.
So, one thing I'm wondering if we can get, like, what that annualizes out to? So, $31 an hour is?
Basically double it and it's reasonably close. So, that's 62,000, I don't know, 64,000 a year?
Because what that shows is, so I think the average wage and the median wage in Washington County metro area is $57,000 or a little higher than that. So, basically, if you have less than a four-year degree, you'd be less than?
Half.
Well, there's, Washington County, the average is going to be really high because of Intel and Nike, Columbia. Those are headquarters, operations with, really, Intel isn't headquarters, but it's?
It's their largest global operation.
Yeah, so that's going to hugely raise the average as opposed to the median.
Well, I think even like Multnomah is something 50-something. So, that means that if you're, in your calculation, the two-year, still be less than the average.
The median is probably close to the two-year in terms of median hourly wage.
So, in what we sent you, there is actually a formula that the employment department has given us to calculate an annual wage. So, it's hourly rate times 174 times 12. And that's how they calculate that.
There's typically 2,080 per person, a year plus or minus eight.
Hourly rate plus what?
Hourly rate times 174 times 12.
But double it and get your run above.
We get the point. Education wage. The other thing that we provided now are a little bit about the definitions regarding hard-to-fill, high-growth, high-wage, high-demand, and high-skill. So, I'm not going to read all of this.
Can I stop you for a second? So, these are additional slides after we announced. Do the new packets have those?
The packets, I don't think they're provided.
But did you get, you all got them?
We just had this question, so we added this today, just so you were aware. You haven't memorized, right?
Very Oregon people. Much more sensible.
Thank you. So, what I'm told in terms of hard-to-fill is that in Oregon, it's employers self-recording. And these are the reasons given most often for difficulty in filling vacancies: lack of qualified candidates, unfavorable working conditions, lack of soft skills, lack of work experience, and low wages. High growth is employment in an occupation that is much larger than most occupations across the state. High wage, occupations paying more than the all-industry, all-ownership median wage. High demand, occupations having more than the median number of total. Growth plus replacement openings. And high skill, occupations with a typical educational level needed for entry or post-secondary training, non-degree or higher. So, I know that's fast, but I just, we just wanted to make sure that you had some context as we go forward.
Because what we did next is that we looked at the national career clusters. So, this is how CTE across the nation is organized by career clusters. And then, we looked at the hard-to-fill, high-growth, high-wage, high-demand, and high-skill careers in the Oregon area and then looked at the programs that we have on our campuses. So, for example, if we look at the top five in the Oregon area, hard-to-fill occupational areas, that would be agriculture, hospitality and tourism, architecture and construction, health, science, and transportation. Next to that number, oh, I apologize. Next to that number is the number of programs of study that we have currently in the district. So, this large chart that you have, along the left side are the national career clusters. And then, across the top are essentially our comprehensive high schools and then the programs that they offer. So, we did a little color coding so that you can see. And so, on this slide, the red is the top five in Oregon, again, because there are lots of different lenses. So, I know one of the questions that came up tonight in the board meeting is what's the best kind of programming to have as you look at CTE? And that's a really difficult question to answer because of the different lenses that you can look at the labor market data. So, again, we can look at hard-to-fill, high-growth, high-wage, high-demand, high-skill. And so, that's sort of how we broke it out because it's not just an easy question. That's something that I think it's important for all of us to sort of grapple with. And so, that's why we put onto this chart the programs that we currently have right now and where they would fall using Oregon labor market data.
And would the emerging industries fall into high growth?
Yes.
So, I'm wondering the hard-to-fill terminology, whether there's ever, it ever gets bifurcated like hard-to-fill because the unfavorable working conditions and low wages versus the hard-to-fill because you don't have enough people with PhDs? Because it seems like you'd want to distinguish between the two of them.
I agree. And so, the difficult part in measuring that is that how the labor market uses that is by its employer reported. So, we can look at specifically how different types of employers reported, what they think is the reason the job is hard to fill. Is that it?
It does.
So, the next is high growth. So, the top five industry sectors for high growth in Oregon is architecture and construction, business management, information technology, and then STEM. And so, next to it is, again, the number of programs we have. And then, you can see which high schools are offering those programs on this chart as well. And we have more of the charts of them. Okay, and then again, so then the next kind of lens you could look at might be high wage. And so, high wage, again, in Oregon, is education and training. And again, that can be interesting because you might think of, well, maybe teachers aren't paid so high, but when you think of the universities and especially the specialized schools that are here, and that's where that falls in: business management, health science, transportation, and then STEM.
So, does this, so this is different than private education then? So?
It's not.
Okay.
It's not.
So, these career clusters are organized around occupations as opposed to industry. So, private education is a history, is an industry. It's what, it's what does the business do? Within that industry, you can have all sorts of occupations, including teachers, but also managers, secretaries, so on.
And so, those occupations, so there's also this handout in the packet that is the national career clusters and the occupational groups that fall under those and looking at different CTE programming. And I have more copies of this.
Okay, I think this is a Scott question.
Please. You have the expert at the table.
So, I mean, I'm looking at the hard-to-fill and the high-growth and high-wage. And I'm looking at, let's just say, health science. It seems to me that you have these big clusters and within the cluster, you've got, you know, a, like a tier, maybe two tiers at the top that are going to be so highly paid that they're going to overwhelm, when you're talking about averages, they're going to overwhelm all the other thousands of minions out there who are in relatively low-wage positions within health sciences. So, tell me I'm wrong.
So, I'm not sure how the calculation is done here. And if, when, so high-wage occupation areas.
So, here, this is clustering, so what you're saying is correct in that this would cluster doctors and surgeons along with home care physicians. That's why the clustering.
But the question is, is it weighted by the numbers in each of those occupations?
Yes.
Or is this just an average?
For, that's, I'll have to get back to you. I know it's a median number because we did look that up today.
If it's a median, you're going to have real trouble combining medians from different occupations. Like, you can't do that. Averages, you can combine.
The actual report lists every, all these different career areas and all of the job openings and salaries.
With, and it gives it so.
So, is that, is that prepared by?
By the employment department.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, so high-wage, we have it in all the categories.
Potentially, then, they could calculate a true median for the group, but I?
And so, we have this, depending on how deep you want to dig into the labor market data, we have it all.
Well, I don't know, to be perfectly honest, I'm not at all convinced I'm capable of really digging in, which is why I'm.
Yes, absolutely.
But, so, in terms of our planning for how we're going to prepare kids, I mean, just in health sciences, you know, how many, how many of the kids who we're giving kind of a leg up in health sciences are going to end up as neurosurgeons who are making, you know, 300 grand plus a year as opposed to, you know, certified nurse, nursing assistants?
CNAs.
CNAs or, you know, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. And I think we can also think about it as we're giving them the foundation. So, maybe what if they walk off of our campus with a CNA? And if they love it and want to continue on to med school, then we've given them that exposure. And if they want to continue and have a career at that point, then maybe they?
I mean, I'm not going to argue the point. It's just, this is, this is my worry, Larry, because I think all of these things, I could go into my wealth inequality little rant, but I will spare you, but that's where I'm headed here. So, I'll just leave it at that. Well, but I think the concern about looking at the current labor market and that's what we're feeding, careers are bringing it into, people with a long-term trend in Oregon, are, actually, wage growth is slowing. We used to be tracking right with Washington State and we're now tracking with Idaho.
We haven't tracked with Washington State in a long time.
Well, it's, the gap is getting larger.
Wage growth has stagnated.
And so, it's correct. If you look at, well, that's like a reflection of the jobs that we have now. So, part of this, I think, this exercise is like, what are the jobs, not necessarily that we have now, but that we want to, want to have?
Or that we don't even know exist.
This isn't jobs that we want to have. This is based on a projection of industries, not that we want to have, but that we, that the department, employment department thinks is a likely growth path over the next 10 years.
Right, so this was released in June and this is, these are their projections through 2027, so.
So, just looking at it from an industry standpoint, so having gone from around the country, state to state, and looking at, like, if you were going to put, expand your campus somewhere, looking at, I mean, all the employment departments have, like, if you come here, here the number of engineers that you have available. And some places, it's like you just couldn't go because there's no, you know, engineering base or pick the job class that you're filling for. And I guess one of the things I was concerned about in this is, I mean, I think we want to fill out the higher education, those job classes that have higher education so that we can have support industries that pay higher wages versus having, this is what is available or what?
Right. And that's two different, two different ways of looking at it, like food service, culinary, where we have a lot of programs, high-need, low-wage. So, what I'll say about culinary is that the program is not culinary, it is hospitality and tourism, which is broader than just culinary. And so, it's intended, and it's that, you know, not that necessarily it's like a neurosurgeon, but it is intended to be broader, to provide more opportunity for students across the board. And as we do these CTE programs, it's not that we're preparing students to be a this or a that, it's that they get exposure to what the opportunities are within that program area and understand what the education and training is needed for a particular area if they're interested when they graduate, they leave with a plan, knowing that that plan probably will change. But as we've built out the CTE programs, it isn't that we're going to create, we're creating all engineers or we're creating all doctors in the health. It's giving them a broader picture of what that career field is about.
And I do want to mention specifically on culinary. Beyond industry applications, knowing how to cook is a fundamental life skill. And an awful, awful lot of the children in this town are not learning how to do that. It has an enormous impact on lifetime earnings, on household earnings, on lifetime health outcomes. If you know how to cook, you're going to be healthier, you're going to live longer, you're going to have a much higher quality of life. And I really hope that we could also be looking at it in terms of those needs of our children.
Well, I can stay on the whole.
I'd be interested seeing the research on that.
Oh, I have seen it and I can get it to you. Thank you.
Well, on the whole, like, just, I guess, on culinary too, it's like a whole example of, like, the broader spectrum. So, like, at Cleveland, I know that, like, I mean, you know, one of the main things you do in culinary class is learn to cook, but the students also get a couple months or a month or two on, like, etiquette at, like, a dinner place. Or like, if you're, you know, if you want to, if you're a server in high school or something like that, you know, waiter or waitress, like, they're learning those skills in that class. They're learning a little bit, they're learning more than just cooking. So, I can stand with that, yeah. I agree with that.
One of the concerns, this is a similar conversation that I remember having with the superintendent in San Francisco when we were asking a question about hospitality. Because one of the dangers there became that while they were supposedly training you to become a restaurateur, what ended up happening is you became a waiter. You were not owning a restaurant. So, the training did not equip you with what you needed to reach that level. And then, what ended up happening is it was funneling the Latino students towards hospitality, not architecture or the medical field, if you recall. And that, and the same thing happened with construction. Right, it was funneling, and so, all of a sudden, different CTE programs were racially different. And so, then, by extension, then, the quality of the program began to either drop or up based on the expectation. So, the one thing to be aware of is that each one has, if the focus is on building out a CTE program that actually is forward-thinking, it really is about where are you going to get the biggest bang for the buck in preparing students for a future that actually provides higher wages?
And Jeannie, what was the name of the CTE school in Salem?
CTAP.
Thank you, CTAP. When we went through CTAP, we saw that each one of the departments was putting all of that information, exactly what Sheriff Moore's been talking about, what all of the possible specific jobs, specific career fields you could go into within that industry and broken out by how much more training you would need post-graduation and how much money you could earn when you were doing that. And they had made big posters that were in every project area in CTAP.
Like, really clearly articulated pipelines, like, if you achieve this, then your next level would be this, then your next level would be this, which would require X amount more schooling or?
Yeah.
It was really clearly articulated.
Cool. So what I'll say is that we have posters as well, that we will be sharing with our CTE teachers on Thursday, actually, that do similar to what we have at CTech, not exactly the same, but similar, that give students an idea of what the skills are that they're learning in this class, what the average wages are, what the post-secondary training might be, so we're doing something similar to that.
So, so I think the purpose tonight was, because we heard multiple board discussions, that, you know, where are we headed with CTE? And so, we're really fortunate to have Laura Terry's expertise joining the district, building and, you know, partnering now with Genie, and so part of it is just anticipating where the labor market is going, but it's, it's about, you know, being a forward-thinking school district, what is the right equitable balance of CTE programming? Sometimes it's not because school, you know, because students are, are gonna see through a strand, we also just wanna provide exposure and a course, and we know that our data is showing that when kids take just even one course, they, they engage and they do better. Or even when you visit with students, I remember having this exact conversation with a health career student at Benson, I go, oh, so you're, you're interested in some aspect of the health or medical field, he goes, no, I actually wanna do something completely different, but I enjoy this experience here than having in high school. So, you know, our, our kids are young, and our students are, are kinda still forming what they wanna do, but they're enjoying the course of study, so, uh, it is good to sort of offer this portfolio, and we wanna be thoughtful about making sure, no matter what campus you're on, that you have an opportunity in each of these clusters to choose from if you're, if you're interested in.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you somewhat, but let's go ahead, and I think we should go through the presentation, and then talk about what, about what that perspective is.
Exposure versus programs for.
No, I, I, I believe my approach is a little more student-centered than clusters, I don't think kids identify with clusters. They identify with what they like to do, but let's, let's go for it.
Okay, and so this is, just the purpose of this is just to build some common language, so when we talk about a program of study, there could be multiple programs of study that fall under a larger career cluster, so that's really what this is just an example of. When we talk about, for example, health science, we might have a program of study that's dental or nursing, but the big picture. So again, in, in bringing us all together around some common language would be, for an example, architecture and construction would be the cluster area, the program of study might be electrical, and then when we talk about the pathway, we're talking about the progression of courses, and so that might look like, if you're in construction at Benson, that might look like you're freshman or sophomore year, maybe you're taking a tech, the tech geometry class, the next year you take the construction tech two, so, and we call that the pathway, which is again, so here's just a few more quick examples, again with the idea that we're building some common language around that, so, under business management, that might be the cluster that we're referring to, same name as the program of study, and then the pathway is the course progression, the classes that students take in that program of study comes, becomes that pathway that we're talking about. And so, a few more language vocabulary terms that we wanna talk about, is when we talk about CTE students, we refer to them by either participant, concentrator, and completer, and that has to do with the number of credits that they take, and then that also, later, and we're getting there, also relates to some state funding, so, do you wanna let them know about the synergy?
So, um, last year was the first year that we had CTE data specifically in synergy, so there was no way to know specifically, get reports out that said this is how many students, this is how many concentrators or participants or completers. Uh, so, what we know for sure is what was in there last year, if they were in CTE last year, it's absolutely a hundred percent we're there. So this is the information that we have, so, um, and the orange is seventeen, eighteen, and the blue is this year, eighteen, nineteen. You can see that students, sixty-two percent of the six thousand, six hundred and forty-five students were participants, ninety-seven percent of the eighteen, nineteen students are participants, concentrators, completers at five, ten percent, and then there's another category around completer, which means that they've completed their two, two credits and have taken a TSA. Uh, the next.
The TSA is what?
Technical, I'm sorry, technical skills assessment, which I'm gonna get to.
And is that, we, I know we now have a designation upon graduation, a CTE designation, is, what, what does it take to get that?
Two credit, the two credit.
The TSA.
And, and taking the TSA.
So that's like two classes all year.
So it's two credits, it could be two classes, it could, if they have semesters, it could be more classes, but the baseline to be a completer is completing the two credits, plus the TSA.
So, um, so the ninety-seven percent means what again?
Of seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine students that are in CTE, ninety-seven percent of them are projected to earn a half credit, and fifty-seven percent, one credit, at ten percent, two credits, and so on.
Oh, so this is of students who are off in CTE, this is not a percentage of all of our students who are.
But we are getting.
So why doesn't that add up to?
Sorry, no, no, no.
Why doesn't that add up to a hundred?
Because some will probably not. They're duplicated, some of them are duplicated.
Well, so the ninety-seven percent includes all of the other things, right?
Right, is it, it's like billing on the.
Yeah. By gender, uh, in twenty seventeen, eighteen, fifty-nine percent male, forty-one percent female, and this year it's sixty-one percent male and thirty-nine percent female.
Going the wrong way.
And this is enrollment by race, and this is for the seventeen, eighteen school year, and, um, so this is the district average for high school across the board, so Asian is eight point eight percent, African-American is nine point six, Latino fifteen point seven, and so on. Uh, white is fifty-five point eight percent, and participate, the, the participants, concentrators, and completers are in fifty-five percent to fifty-nine percent. So, we're in the range of our population of high school students, because when I first saw this, I thought we are way off balance, but in fact, we're actually pretty close in, in terms of students in CTE, very close to the district averages.
And if you look, it looks like we're retaining students, with the exception of our African-American students, meaning we're retaining them through a pathway, the, the course completion.
Which would also correspond with our graduation rates.
Okay, so going.
And academic achievement.
Going back, the oranges would all add up to a hundred, the yellows would all add up to a hundred, the greens would all add up to a hundred.
That's the, that's what's supposed to be there.
Okay, okay, just, just.
I hope it, I hope it does.
It, it looks like it does, but it just wanted to.
Uh, in terms of graduation rates, so this is information that, um, in terms of CTE, that we get from the Oregon Department of Education, and it's based on seniors, um, this top row is the district graduation rate going back to twenty eleven, twelve, when we had sixty-three percent graduation rate, and in sixteen, seventeen, we have seventy-six percent graduation rate. This line is CTE students who've earned, who've completed one credit, and what you'll see is that they are graduating at a much higher rate than the, than the district graduation rate, and it's held pretty steady, and it holds true also for our students for our sub-population. So, what we know is that if students are in CTE, they are graduating at higher rates.
This is PPS, this document that we added is across Oregon, so these numbers of students who are graduating, who participate in CTE, it holds true in PPS in Oregon, and we also, the national numbers as well, and that's, um, we added to your packet the governor's future-ready Oregon, because this is also a lot of the citations that she's using is around the benefits of CTE for students, and, and being able to retain them and graduate them when they are participating in CTE.
Designation is a participant, concentrators, and completers, is that a state or a federal designation?
State.
State. So participant, like, half a credit seems kind of a low bar, I mean, is that, is it not to make a difference, I mean, it just seems like.
Well, one class.
Well, this is one, this is one credit.
I know, but I'm going back to just like the participants, when we have ninety-seven percent, but it's really a student taking a half a credit.
One class.
One class.
Well, see, but that, that's why I asked, what, what does that ninety-seven percent mean? And really, I think we, then, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna work backwards, going below, seven percent are completers plus TSA, another three percent are completers without a TSA, I'm kinda subtracting as I go along.
So, I think what it means is that we have more space in CTE for more kids. That more of our kids should be, yes, more of our kids.
What percent of our kids took at least one CTE credit?
More of CTE for the district, what percent of the.
Isn't it this blue bar, fifty-seven percent?
No, because this is of CTE.
Are you talking overall, like all students who participate?
Yes.
All, all students.
Students completing one credit.
So if we have seventy-seven thousand plus students participating in CTE, and we have fifteen thousand high school students, so half maybe?
So half are taking at least a half a credit of CTE.
Okay, so going back to that graduation rate, um, for example, what percent of Native American students who, were, if this is a four-year graduation rate?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, but we can get.
So that, that would be useful perspective.
Okay, technical skill assessment, so it is a requirement that students who are completers take a technical skill assessment. It is, these tests are based on industry standards, we, they are proctored, it is not just a test that, that the teacher gives in the classroom. Um, and when I took over CTE, you can see in this column on the left, this is the goal of just having students take the TSA, not passing, but just taking, sixty percent, and we were, we only had thirty-five percent of our students taking, of the, of the eligible students to take, only three to five percent, and so, um, these years that are unavailable, we had a different vendor doing, doing the tests. We changed vendors, and you can see that we've started testing more, uh, in twenty fourteen, fifteen, and of those that took the test, eighty-six point three percent passed, we are now exceeding the goal of students taking the TSA, and of those that took the TSA, it's eighty point nine percent passed. We also know that last year, seventy-eight point five percent passed, but we don't have this information yet from ODE, we won't get that from ODE until November.
And in any of the industries, are these technical skills assessments, um, do they enable students to advance in terms of apprenticeship, or college credits, or anything like better, they're really just for our own internal, you know, statewide internal assessment?
So we are required to take, to have students take these tests, but the way we use them really is for teacher improvement in the classroom. Um, the tests themselves are by standard, and when the results come back, first of all, they can see by student, red, yellow, green, with each standard, whether they passed or didn't pass, um, and then there's a summary for the teacher who can determine that, I thought I did a good job with this, but maybe we need to do something different, so it can be used to support teaching in the classroom.
And I think that's definitely an area of growth for our district in looking at industry-recognized certifications.
Right, right, yeah, absolutely.
Which in some cases might be very similar, but we're just not offering it.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's, but it, it's been really hard over the years, I don't know what your experiences are, to really get any kind of industry buy-in to say, oh, student, you've, you've got this certification, you're good in our book.
They're not asking for it.
It just doesn't, yeah, let me tell you, programs have been trying for years to get that, and it just.
But like that, um, CTech had several of those, and sometimes it was just with regard to a particular piece of machinery or something that you had been certified on.
Correct.
Okay, so the next thing we wanted to talk to you about are the different options for CTE funding, and so from the state perspective, funding opportunity differs depending on student participation, so, for example, if a student is a, considered a participant, then we may use Perkins, which is a federal grant, and so we're gonna dig deep into each of these different funding options, but just to give you kind of an overview, so if a student is a concentrator, also Perkins and Measure ninety-eight, a completer, which is two or more credits, the same, um, once a student gets to three or more credits, there's an additional option of state funding called pathways funding. And so we are going to kind of dig into each of these, so Perkins is a federal grant that's awarded to the states, and then the states award that funding to the districts, um, something that you'll notice though is that our allocation is going down, and that's because it's not dependent on the number of students in CTE programs, it's dependent on city census and poverty rates, so Title I, they align the Perkins funding with Title I allocations, there's a direct alignment, so as, um, our districts.
Filtrefine.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if it's census, if, if you have an, an aging population, does that factor in as well? Like if you've got, you've got people like me getting old, and as opposed, or is it just.
It's around the kids, the free and reduced lunch numbers.
It's not free and reduced lunch, it's census data around kids.
Kids and poverty.
Okay, yes.
So that actually may not be an accurate representation of the students we actually have in our district.
Correct.
Who's, who's filling out the census.
Correct.
Right, you're right.
Versus awarding to districts based on their farm, right?
And I, I would assume, since it's based on city census data, that it's not just Portland public, it's Portland as a whole, and our demographics are different than.
Not necessarily, there's, there's census data specific to the city of Portland, or to the school district, you could pull data that way.
Oh, is, do you happen to know or is it done that way?
I can find that out.
Oh, okay, I.
I'd be happy to do that.
I had assumed the former, not the latter, please, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, absolutely, so the next option for funding to talk to you about is a state option, it's called career pathways funding, and it is based on students who are completers, so if they take three or more credits in a pathway, um, the difference in this funding is that it's kinda, it's a pot of money, and then once the state sees how many students there are, they allocate it to the different districts based on that.
So it's, so it's, it lags the actual students.
Correct, so for example, you can see here, um, in fifteen, sixteen, we only had ten programs that were awarded, but there was some more funding, so it's not, again, it's not aligned to the number of programs, it's.
How many completers are within a given program?
In the whole state, right, and so we will get this year's numbers in November.
So, does that drop a reflection of more completers statewide, or a drop in completers locally?
No, I think, I think it's, it's that there are more students statewide.
Like way more.
Same pot, more.
Right, right, the pie doesn't get any bigger, the slices get smaller.
Right, and.
Which was the goal of nine, uh, Measure ninety-eight.
Right, and with the, the highlighting on CTE programs and the benefits to students, I think more and more districts are.
The other thing about pathways money to know is that the funding, funds are restricted, so if the funds are awarded to Benson High School Construction, it can only, those funds can only be used at Benson High School for construction, you cannot use them for any other program within the school.
So if you get that from having three credits, do we measure by three credits, because on our chart, we only have the two credits, or is that because we don't have any three credits? Because on our chart, we only have the two credits, or is that because we don't have any three credits? Or am I reading the chart wrong?
We do have three credits.
Okay, I want to get the participants, concentrators, and disenters.
So this is, the three credits is specifically tied to the career pathways funding. So in terms of the state, a completer is two credits, that's the magic number.
So it's not three?
Three, three comes into play with this bucket of money.
Additional funding.
Right.
So I guess I'm asking, do we measure the completers by two and the completers by three?
So we measure the completers by two, we get pathway funding when they hit three. But they, there's on a different term for that. And we have, and we, and so in synergy, we do not currently have a way to have it set up to pull for how many of them earn three credits, I guess that, is that what you're asking?
That's my question, because this chart...
And so that would be something that we need to do. That's something we're working with system.
So I'm surprised the number's so low, don't all the Benson kids, don't they all be completers?
Not necessarily. And, and the other caveat is that we just did this for the first time last year. So there may be students, we changed codes, we had to do things so that everything matched with the state. So we may have lost some students along the way, but truly not.
Wouldn't that be like a natural, a logical thing to assume that all the students, the graduates of Benson would have had two, you would assume?
That. We'll do some additional checking on that.
Every year, there are three to five students graduating from Benson who are not graduating in a major. Typically, they came into the school halfway through.
Three to five, but it's like still...
Most of the kids, is what yours is.
Yes, but the number seems way too low.
So that would be a problem with our systems in terms of gathering data.
We've not, it's a new system, so.
One year, right?
Okay, the other funding opportunity is the Measure Ninety-Eight funds. And so these were allocated based on the high school success plan. So looking at the goals around the high school success was around opportunities for dropout prevention, for college-level education opportunities, and for CTE. And so over the course of two years, it was approximately six million dollars each year. We have the data breakdowns, if you want more detailed information around this, but just as a general idea around the dropout prevention, which was the high school success teams, the student engagement coaches, working on that chronic absentee rate, and those, the programs that we've implemented for this year. Then also dual credit, both CTE and other, as well as CTE. So the CTE money, how we use that Measure Ninety-Eight funds around that is we use an equity formula to give each of the campuses a specific allocation of funds. And then we held some to use towards the enhancement of the programs. And so in just a minute, we're gonna get to where we're going next in working on quality of our programming. And so that is what kind of this bigger chunk is, is using professional development and different opportunities to create quality programs, and also to do some expansion programs. So for example, do you want to tell them about MLC?
Steve, so MLC, we added a program at MLC for the first time this year. So we've added a business program and invested Measure Ninety-Eight dollars to launch. So equipment and materials and supplies and professional development for them so they could offer a CTE program to their students for the first time. Please.
Can I ask about the Measure Ninety-Eight? So was this a straight-up like formula allocation from the state, or this was an application, right?
No, so what you had to do the first year was signal how you were gonna spend the monies. There's actually a lot of flexibility in this money, more than there ever has been in any state money that I've seen. The thing that really stands out to me, and this is really a little bit of a political statement in that I know that the Measure Ninety-Eight, passing of that, the intent by people in the state was that it was gonna fund mostly career and technical, but that it was also going to, you know, help you get kids to college and address dropout prevention. The, the way we've allocated to spend those dollars right now is a little bit reversed from what I think a lot of people thought we would be spending on. And part of that is that we had a lot of flexibility, and I didn't come until we were pretty far along the process. And so I don't, this isn't pointing fingers or anything wrong with our process. It's, I think that there was during all the transition and turnover with superintendents, there just wasn't a through line from what the state and what the measure was supposed to be focusing on, there wasn't that guidance to the internal teams. So our internal teams got together and looked at our data and the things that they felt were the issues. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, people who are on the leadership team who are doing that work. And so at the time, the team determined that was the number one thing that we need to work on. Now, where we're trying to collect more data, and we're trying to sort of weigh those things, we have a lot of data cleanup, and this is a whole other conversation, but with our attendance and to make sure things are accurate with dropout, we have a lot to do to clean up the data so that we can really understand that, just like we're cleaning up the data and trying to better understand our data around CTE. I think we would be better served, and the sort of state, which really Portland Metro was the one who helped us get this money, there was an expectation that we would really be focusing on career and technical, and I've already shared with our team that that's the direction we're gonna need to go. The state didn't provide a lot of information around the plan in the very beginning. They kind of first said, just tell us if you want it, and if you're gonna have a plan ready. And you don't even have to spend money in the first year, you can spend money in the second year, which is what we did. But then you had to get your plan ready and get it turned in, and I think that they finally gave guidance like three weeks before we had to turn it in. So our team was already working on it. So everybody was doing what they could do with the information they were given at the time, based on, I would say, there was also this sort of big disconnect with all the transition and leadership that was going on. Now we have this great opportunity, which is why I asked them to build this entire presentation in this way, to build all of our understanding about what is going on in the big picture, and what are all the pieces that we need to understand. Because we do have sort of philosophical places, we need to understand where the board is on, but I think it's really hard to make those decisions because you can't make them on just a pure sort of this is my belief, when a lot of it is impacted by funding, and what those pathways are in every building, and how we get most kids to them, and so on. So I wanted to make sure you saw how complex this was, and that we have multiple variables to be looking at. And so part of them are to fix in, how shall I say, evolve our Measure Ninety-Eight plan. But the part I didn't even know about was this other pathway fund. And I don't even know when that came about. I've also heard that there will probably be more. I don't actually know where it's coming from, or what it looks like, but it will be coming to career and technical, not so much college opportunities or dropout prevention. So it behooves us to get a real focus on CTE, not just because we're building schools and we're rebuilding Benson, but it's going to sort of exponentially increase our capacity to add more without taking more out of other programs in the district.
I would just say it's not, sorry, not either or, I mean, the framing was really about CTE as dropout prevention. So I know that the language of the measure enables us to use it for other graduation initiatives that aren't CTE-related, but the connection was that CTE, we know to be a lever to keep kids...
Well, I'd be slightly cautious on that, around whether that's causation, or whether kids who are gonna succeed happen to go into CTE. So I wouldn't go hard and fast there unless we have some indication.
I think what she's indicating is that was legislative intent, and around the measure, the whole campaign around that measure was based on that intent.
Yeah.
But, okay, but our goal is to do what's best for kids, which may or may not be the intent.
There's a lot of people in the state, I think, that are concerned that the dollars that are starting to go towards CTE might not come at the flow. We want them to come if PPS doesn't invest more in CTE.
This is exactly what I've been hearing from my colleagues. So I think the way you framed it, Dr. Curtis, is very important sort of context about where we are now. This is increasing in attention. If there's gonna be any additional revenue for K-12, it's safe to predict early on, this area is probably gonna be one of those areas. And there is a lot of looking at how PPS is availing and taking advantage of these resources. While there was some initial flexibility, you see a disproportionate amount going to some areas, and probably Joe, I almost said Prefontaine, Lefontaine. We'll talk a little bit during the high school, how it fits into what high school leadership is seeing. And there were some real needs there, so, you know, to Scott's point, you know, they were being student-centered, but, you know, folks are looking to PPS to really start, you know, getting robust, you know, and building upon the work we've started here around CTE.
Can I just, like, really thirty thousand foot, so just about the money? Like, how is the money allocated? Is it a, so every district had to produce a plan? And presumably attach some dollar figures to that plan? So was it that...
No, they told us the dollars per high school student.
Okay.
And it was left to the district to decide how they would distribute those funds.
So it's a formula? You have X amount of money?
Yeah, and there was a percentage you could spend on middle school and so on. I know you have more of that in here, so.
So, just additionally, our district is investing additional general funds into the CTE programming. These are some of the biggest buckets around CTE consumables, please.
So the ninety thousand for curlies, do you know any, like, any more details on that? Like where that is specifically going?
I do.
Okay. Is there like an overall, I mean, could you...
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so this particular, so we contract with the Portland Workforce Association, PWA, who provides different career day options.
The expo.
The expo, the job expo, for students to get those career-related learning experiences. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so that's the main connection for that.
Yes, and so additionally, I think really exciting thing to highlight is also, we have brought on J and Partner Connect, and we have taken on a lot of internal capacity to bring additional curlies to students instead of, I think previously we relied really heavily on PW, and now we have a lot of expansion opportunities. Even Jeannie has a new partnership with the Goodwill. And do you wanna, just quickly, just a touch?
So J has been working with Goodwill to do things like, excuse me, mock interviews and resume writing, and all of those kinds of things, going in, helping with career fairs at schools. They go into the schools, they bring partners into the schools, and at no cost. And so it's allowed us to leverage what we're doing with PW, with Goodwill. We have partnerships coming now with the City of Portland and others to, because we have fifteen thousand high school students who should have deep, rich career learning experiences, and so we're, and we also have added Partner Connect, which is our data tool, where people can go in and register and say, you know, I'm willing to sign up, I'll work with any school, or I only want to work with Cleveland High School. So it's giving us more capacity.
Okay, that's good to hear.
And so we're gonna just jump in to give some specific data points around Benson, because again, trying to give you the information that you need to move forward with these really tight timelines that are coming up. So on the left, you'll see, these are the programs of study, CTE programs of study that are at Benson, and a number of teachers. So I'm not gonna read them all to you, but we have eleven CTE programs of study currently at Benson. And then on the right is student participation, first by female, male, and then by race. And then you can see in seventeen, eighteen, nine hundred and fifty-eight students, and in eighteen, nineteen, a thousand thirty-nine students. That's an offer of CTE programs and clusters that are also offered at other schools. So as we were looking at all of those high wage, high demand, and showing how things align, and as you look at the chart, you can see that in the area, cluster areas of architecture and construction, arts, health, information technology, manufacturing, engineering, those are offered at Benson, but they are also offered on other campuses as well. Other things that Benson has, they have a pre-apprenticeship program with, in manufacturing. They have an agreement and partnership with Oregon Institute of Technology. The engineering program of study received two thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars from, two hundred thousand dollars from Jim Pyro, who is in the loan for the engineering program. And in the construction program of study actually builds houses. So it's pretty extensive, the work that they do. Just to wrap up our portion, the rubric that we gave is a working document with ODE in how to increase the quality of the programs. So I think, so on the back of this programming sheet, you can see where the district was in two thousand twelve. This is the number of programs the district offered in two thousand twelve. This is the number we're offering now. So I can absolutely say the district's done a great job in growing the programs, and now I think our focus really needs to be around creating quality and enhancing the programs. And so as we look at that, these are some of the targets that we'll be looking at to increase the quality of CTE programming we have. So more partnerships in industry, and you can tell from our speaker tonight and conversations that all of you are having, we have a great buy-in from the community in creating these fantastic partnerships. Other opportunities, Jeannie on Thursday is pulling every CTE teacher in the district together on Thursday to start talking about instructional practices and quality curriculum and alignment, and direct alignment with the GVC that the Core is working on. So really building teacher capacity, so those are just some of the ways that we plan on improving the programs that we have, yes.
And does every CTE strand that we have have a clearly articulated set of standards?
Yeah.
They have to, to be a state-approved program study. But we have some that aren't yet state-approved, right? They're all state, they are now? Yeah.
So a big question for me, are we gonna have a discussion on what's the process?
And we're done. So we put up a few maybe probing questions for you, we're here to answer any questions.
So mine kind of ties into this first one, first question up there. Because when I look across the district, there seems to be huge equity issues. And not a district point of, there hasn't been a fully flown district point of view about sort of what should be offered at each high school versus, hey, there's a teacher who's really excited about this here, and so we're gonna do that, versus... And I think getting disparities across our high schools based on it just organically happening versus the district having a point of view, like every high school needs to have X, and then, you know, here's maybe a place where they gotta choose, or something like that.
So can I just respond to that?
So what I would, I would say is that when you look on the backside of what we have, we didn't have anything in the growth areas such as information technology, computer science, or in engineering, or in, and we have two programs in health sciences. And so we've been intentional about adding programs. So we have computer science now on just about every campus. every campus. We have engineering on multiple campuses. So I don't disagree with you that there's still some places to grow, but we did look at where the industry growth areas were when we started building these programs. Some of it is that we have, we've added programs because a teacher had the credential to do it. It isn't just simply they had an interest, but we could get them credentialed. But, so it's a little bit of both, I think.
Yeah, so I love this, because I thought, when I, this, I thought this is what our current was, and I was like, oh my God, this is outrageous. And then I was like, oh, it's at the side, but look at how much work's been done. But I guess I haven't seen the, and again, this is sort of the decent, more decentralized former approach, but have more of a centralized, we have a point of view about X and being really explicit about it. So if you don't have a teacher that has the CTE credential, like, we need you to get one, or we're going to provide you with one, or however you do it, so that we don't have any gaps, or where we think we shouldn't have any gaps, we don't have.
And that's really why we wanted to open the question with the board, first providing as much information as we could, but then to hear this conversation. Because many of us who came here know, we came here to build a system, and so an equitable system where kids have equitable access. But we need to know what is the belief of the board in what that equitable access could be. I wanted to add one other piece too about Measure 98 that I forgot the prior conversation. Because we do have a lot of programs, we need to spend more of Measure 98 on CTE. It could mean that we're adding programs. It doesn't have to mean that we're adding more programs. It could be that we're buying more consumables, more equipment, doing more training for the teachers, right?
Which is kind of what we've been doing, because
Right.
Because we've built out, we're not going to be adding another, we're not going to trip, double, triple the number of programs now. That's why we're looking at the quality piece. That's why the investments are. This particular, at Cleveland, for example, the digital media class, the computers were too old to run, you know, state-of-the-art programs. And so that's what we use Measure 98 dollars for.
And I think that's really where we want to go. And we have an RFP out right now to get some experts in to help us align what are our quality standards? And how can we ensure that we are the leading expert in Oregon? Because we have such great opportunity with the industry partners and really looking at, okay, so we have these programs, but how do we bring them to the quality and level that all of our students deserve?
And a very important component of that, certainly via Benson and then by extension across the district, with such a tiny budget for consumer goods.
Yeah.
What you can do as a teacher is so tied to what your relationships are out in the industry and in the community. If you can get lumber donated, you can build something. If you can get computers donated, you can do digital media. If you have the personal bandwidth to be able to write grants or grant applications that are sizable, you can buy things. An awful lot of our people across the district don't have that yet. And they're going to need support from the central office and that we can build relationships across disciplines or between disciplines across schools.
Does anyone else want clarity around, like, the consumable question, or what funding sources can pay for consumables? Or are we clear?
No, it's just clear that more is better.
Right, because we can't spend Perkins dollars on consumables.
Yeah.
So we're limited to pathways and general funds.
So do we have industry advisory committees for our programs?
It's an expectation. It's an expectation that each program of study meets with their advisory committee twice a year, at least once in person. I would say that the majority of them do. I don't think they all do. We have many that are still fairly new programs, but that's the expectation. And we are looking at us doing something centrally, so that maybe instead of each school having, or each program to have their own, that we, as a district, we would have a construction program of study that serves the entire district.
And that would be a great way to build partnerships too for external investment, is to get a core group in each industry or area to be engaged as a thought partner, but then also. And to ensure that students in those programs are all getting a high-quality experience.
Absolutely, and relevant to the market.
So are those industry advisors giving us that this is the, or state-of-the-art?
So I'm saying yes, in some cases, right?
Yes.
And in some cases, it's, these are the people that have been their advisory committee for a very long time. And so maybe it's time to do some tweaking and changing. But I'll give you an example of Benson Radio, where he has industry people, and he has people from the community college that the program aligns to, and they give him, they come, he shows them what he's doing, and they say, you know what, we don't do that anymore, you should do this. I mean, it is, it's a very tight partnership, and they are very, very helpful to him.
Yeah.
And it's a huge area for growth, for a lot of the programs.
Quality in those industry committees across the district really depends. And yeah, Benson Radio is phenomenal. Some of those people are very old at this point, but they have stayed so on top.
They are, they're still on the radio. They're still, they're still.
Oh, my goodness, yeah. They're really something.
Yeah. I'm a little surprised, and this may be just, this may be just words. Okay, let me put it this way. But can you talk about the overlap between STEM and CTE? Because, I mean, you've got a line here for STEM, and the only thing under it is engineering. And I would think it would have lots more intersections with, like, health sciences. How was that at STEM?
Because we have a separate health sciences cluster.
Right, so I guess, you know, we're supposed to be investing in STEM, in STEAM, and we're supposed to be investing in CTE. Where's the Venn diagram? You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So that there's a lot of overlap between clusters in terms of specific occupations. That's one reason I don't like them. But if you look at the occupational projections for STEM excluding the computer-based, STEM as a group is average nationally, locally. So the STEM has great marketing, and it's important stuff, but in terms of occupational projections, it's average, except the computer stuff is kind of off the charts. And again, within those specific STEM occupations, some are highs, some are medium, some are low.
So we actually, in one of my first weeks, had a statewide meeting with all of the STEM directors and all of the CTE directors. And this was the biggest topic, because the state-funded STEM centers and hubs, I'm sorry, hubs around the state, and then, and they weren't in alignment with the CTE regions. So this is a great question and something that we can absolutely work to flesh out, because again, as we're building this common language, to help flesh out what are those intricacies. And all the way at the state coordinator levels, there's still some confusion around that.
So I was in the beginning meetings around the Portland Metropolitan STEM Partnership, and it, there's so many other variables to look at, because it's also this conversation of, if you have math and science meeting, Common Core State Standards, but then there's also like this course that has to meet what the transcript needs to be for kids to graduate with that credit in that narrow math description in order to go to college or whatever. And so to stretch that to meet and integrate with STEM, it just wasn't working. And so focusing on engineering was one way to do that, because, so what we were saying is that the science and math standards, making sure that kids know those and the knowledge and skills will help them do well in those STEM-type careers. But to mix the classes or try to blend that always ended up in not a very positive pathway for kids, because we have this sort of rigid expectation from college, colleges about what should be in the transcript for math and science. Does that make sense?
Are you talking about, like, applied geometry or something like that?
Well, applied geometry can be part of a STEM. My son's doing that right now at his high school, and it's part of, it can be part of a pathway, I think. I think it's a 0.5 of a credit.
Tech geometry at Benson is actually part of the CTE program of study. So we, there's a team taught with a math teacher and a CT teacher, and we moved it as part of the program.
So it's still adhering to the strict math standards, but then some.
So the way Oregon hubs tried to anchor into STEM when they first started, which is why they went for STEM instead of STEAM, because STEAM then included the arts and it even made it more complicated. So first it was STEM to say, what is it that we're not already doing in schools? And we weren't doing a lot of engineering, which again, I think was also the other push around switching the science courses to physics first. So all of that was mixed in those conversations. And so the early hub work said, if we could at least add engineering opportunities for kids, then it's a hook into the STEM. And in order to do well in those engineering strands, classes, they have to be doing well in science and math. So it was sort of this, like, really awkward way of trying to couple all of these things together, to say you were doing STEM.
Interesting. So the problem is colleges and universities are
Antiquated.
Antiquated.
But we can't change them. We're having enough trouble with day 12.
We should be talking to them.
We are, but.
So I have a backup question. So you started out this presentation by talking about criteria for CTE fields of study in terms of where's the growth, where are the wages and all of that. So then, when we look at what we have, we didn't really address whether or not you feel like there needs to be some fundamental reform to our current slate of offerings, like, we may have invested in some areas of study that don't meet our sort of new criteria, or we may be missing some areas altogether. So where are we on that whole spectrum?
These are the right questions, and I would add, you know, what Director Brim Edwards was just saying around, when you look at that matrix, there seem to be some equity of access questions there too as well.
Right. So, yes, so I think that's next steps, is that we need to, as a district, come up with some, like, basic standards of success and access. And so this is, like, an initial conversation for us to create those. So that's why I really wanted to hear your input and some ideas, so that we can say, we consider a program necessary for all students when it meets these criteria. We consider a program that is, has too few students, not, you know, worth the investment. So I think that that's, the next steps is building out that specific criteria as a district, so that we can go forward with systems and really setting up policy around what that looks like. Because right now, there's not anything set.
And unfortunately, in my mind, that is fundamental to the question of Benson. Because, you know, Benson has existed for, or did exist for many years as almost the only game in town as far as CTE education. So what is Benson now that we are investing in ideally an equitable array of core CTE offerings at every single neighborhood high school? That very much changes the conversation about Benson. But we need to know what that is. Is it equitable? What, are we going to get rid of any of these? Are we going to add anything? You know?
Right. And so hopefully, this presentation is giving you some foundation knowledge, so we can make those decisions. And I think of last night and our visioning and thinking big, and how can we be the innovative leaders? And so if we think, okay, we, in all of our comprehensive high schools, we want every kid to have access to these at least four fundamental programs. So then what would our highlight CTE program in the district have in addition to those four, instead of those four that, and again, thinking if you're a student and your high school has these four, then do I want access to a different program that is offered at Benson? So that, that's absolutely.
And how do you create the flexible facility specifications? Because this, we observed early on, the educational specification should be about the array of educational programming, CTE offerings, et cetera, that are going to be important to know as we continue to build out for the future. So this is sort of a key question we're facing right now, and we want to make sure as we move forward with new campuses, that it's allowing for that array. And then there's the question of, and are we, are we tricking now Benson High even more than your typical comprehensive, given its unique status in the district? And what, how far do we want to go with that? And it's helpful in, from a strategic partnerships point of view, then how we sort of, you know, cultivate those that will lead into, you know, some of the labor market.
Right. So I think the possibilities are endless, and there's some great examples across the country. Like, maybe we open a Nike retail store, you know, with, right, and kids are having opportunities for business management and retail experience, and maybe there's the public access. Maybe we are opening, right, a bank where students are having banking opportunities. Maybe we have a drone program, airplane, maybe we're partnering with the port for new, so if we're thinking big, right, then there's lots of opportunities and lots of industry partners. And so that's really, I think, a conversation that we're really hoping to spur here, and maybe beyond tonight, around is Benson going to be a comprehensive high school that offers the same as the other comprehensive high schools in the district? Or is it going to be a spinoff? And I think that that's a lot, really, these are the fundamental questions that we have to ask.
So some of that ground-level direction on behalf of the board is going to be helpful in this journey, so the staff can get tighter about the concept for the high school.
And I think, not to be too chicken and egg, but I think for us, it would be helpful to have some recommendations from staff. What are the national best practices now? Like, if we want Benson to be the premier 21st century career technical high school, what does that look like?
One of the challenges became time, because right in the middle of our own reorganization and bringing folks who actually had expertise in this area was meeting the deadlines for Benson, and that's become really difficult. And conversations with Derek Anthony about that as an issue, the timeframe. And so one of the reasons, one of the reasons we moved towards wanting an audit around the work was to be able to come up with those national standards, right? Or that would actually inform how Portland Public Schools would go about making decisions about how to move forward with its, with its CTE programming. And so while the, so we didn't know whether we were going to be able to meet that deadline. And so that's a challenge that we're facing. We may, to some degree, be able to provide some insight into that for the Benson experience. But certainly, moving forward was really our ultimate goal, to be able to frame out CTE in Portland Public Schools. But to the degree that we can contribute to that conversation around Benson, we will, using the expertise.
There's the Benson's design implications, but there's the expansion enhancement and holding in.
and holding in of CTE across the high school portfolio and that all students, regardless of comprehensive, alliance, adult, alternative, that everybody has some opportunity to access those programs.
Absolutely.
And so those are the questions, I think, that we're wrestling with is, if you look at that matrix, are there cells here that we're not, we're not addressing? And how do you begin to ramp out a high school, you know, programming space, resources, staffing, curriculum, material, partnerships, all those things that we got to start doing now to be ready for the coming school year? And how does that fit in with high school leaders or supervisors here as we think about sort of, you know, that kind of program even across the district?
Important for us is how do we capture your reactions to what you heard tonight? What you've been thinking about? The whole equity question is a huge question. It has enough, it's multifaceted question. And so for staff to take it and then begin to work from that would require a little bit more understanding of what that actually means for you when we talk about...
And we want to be postured to avail ourselves of any resources that might be coming. And if we're not strong in our plan for that, then we may not be able to take advantage. So...
Can I ask another Venn diagram question, please? So you've got CTE and then you've got hands-on. And you've got high school and you've got middle school. So let me take the first one first. So the, you know, hands-on, personally, I think every kid ought to have access to hands-on stuff. And I think it ought to happen well before high school. But, and CTE is, you know, that's a whole other level. So like how, where are we in terms of hands-on? And what's the Venn diagram between that and CTE?
So I think this is another opportunity for growth because where we are right now is our, our seventh grade students get to have what, you know, we call the seven G experience essentially, which is about a three-day hands-on maker's space type. Eighth grade, we...
Outdoor school in the sixth grade?
It's outdoor school in sixth grade, maker's space in seventh grade. And then in the ninth grade, it looks different across the high schools, but they have some sort of career exploration opportunity. And then we have the CTE offerings in high schools. So there's...
Well, I don't get it. Like if you have electives, how come they can't have like shop? I mean, it used to be shop. And you have an elective.
Because we don't have enough periods in the middle school.
Well, but they have...
They do have some still, but it's...
They have some. If you're a DLI student, you have fewer, or a NSL student. But they take electives. I mean, I don't get why we can find something that's three days.
I guess one of my questions is, like, can we look at what we used to offer that everybody is nostalgic about, you know, in terms of like shop and, you know, all that? And, you know, what do we used to do? And maybe that makes sense.
We still do have some in middle school.
But not everywhere. I mean, this is very inequitable, but...
Yeah. And, you know, although Mr. Bailey is down there guiding for him. But, you know, George still has great shop space and there are a very small number of George students who are using that very well. They've got this fantastic hub building program they've been doing for years, which is, oh, it's Wind and Oar, I think is the group that comes in and helps. And, you know, six kids doing that. They'll have some other project that's five kids building something else. Yes, we do need to grow those opportunities as much as we can. Good stuff.
Okay. So let me give a perspective on that and a more precise definition of, I mean, there's hands-on like project-based learning where you're doing something. And I want to differentiate that between, we can think of people having six basic interests and having, everybody is a mix of those interests, it's the Hahn code kind of thing, which I think of being really student-centric in terms of, what do I like to do? So I'm primarily a math geek, math-science geek, that's one type. The hands-on, I want to be outdoors, is another type. The entrepreneurial slash sales is another type. Helping people, including teaching, is another type. And arts communication. And then there's a six type that's sort of detail-oriented, you end up becoming an accountant or a clerk or... And we're all mixes of those, but usually we have a primary, secondary. And you can look at occupations in terms of those. And I think that's a better starting point than the clusters in terms of being student-centric. The clusters are sort of business-oriented. So within that healthcare cluster, you've got jobs that are more social-oriented versus a physician is science slash entrepreneurial, doesn't have a social bone in their body, some of them. Whereas nurses, science and helping, social. So you're mixing different types of things in that field, sometimes using the same equipment. But I think each of our comprehensive high schools should have a CTE strand in each of those six areas. So if you're a hands-on kid, there's at least something for you that's, it may not be the welding that you want, but maybe it's still something that's hands-on. And there's something for the, I want to help people kid. We've got marketing classes in two of our schools. I think they should be across the board. They're pretty cheap to do. You don't need really special equipment or much special equipment to do it. But, and in Vancouver for a couple of years, they did a pretty thorough assessment of freshmen, sophomores, to help kids understand what their interests were. And it was pretty even across the board, a little higher in art, a little lower in the hands-on. Now, if you look at careers, there's very few careers that are art-centric, number one, but it's buried secondarily. So if we're, I think CTE should primarily be student-oriented, what do you like to do, what's going to keep you in school and motivated? And, and we can link that with high-wage, high-demand careers. But it should be the student interest that's driving it because I think a lot of kids take CTE courses and it's like, I can't remember who was saying it, oh, yeah, I'm enjoying this and it's fun to do, it's not what I want to do with my life. And I think that's okay. And some kids are definitely, I think I'm, I think I want to be a veterinarian or I think I want to go into healthcare. I don't like needles. You know, boom, okay, well, but, but maybe your interest area can be satisfied in something else. So I think that each of our schools should have a hands-on strand, a marketing, entrepreneurial, business kind of strand, whether it's having a credit union branch or a marketing class or whatever. Should have some opportunity in each of those. And I think that's the, that's kind of an equity piece, make sure there's something for each of those kids.
It, it sounds like to me what you're talking about is just a different rubric that doesn't, not mutually exclusive from our, you know, where the job opportunities are and all that, but an internal rubric that would be our balancer so that we look at each of our high schools and have a way of, a defensible way of saying, there's equity of opportunity because, you know, we've touched each of those four areas that you're talking about that aren't necessarily aligned to job fields, but are aligned to how kids like to learn.
Well, almost each, most of those fields have, are linked with careers with the whole, they run the whole gamut in terms of education and wages.
Right.
And the...
Right.
Yeah.
Like construction, think about...
Yeah. The math-science geek is sort of the exception because you really need higher education of some sort, at least beauty college for most of those, if I may insert.
We're also in a place where we have a set of competing interests for the space and the programs. We already have some significant disparity in the equity of programs that we have across the high schools. So as we're talking about these programs and how they might fit into our existing dynamics, then we're going to have to, at the same time, consider the existing dynamics that we have and how, how space, FTE and all that plays together with that. And I know I'm speaking your language because these ladies are looking at that stuff all the time. And I don't disagree with what you're saying. It's just that the challenge is a little bit more sophisticated in being able to offer everything. We're going to have, if we're doing that, we're going to have to take a ways to find room to do things. We just don't have capacity to offer all those strands in every building.
No.
And that circles right back to ed specs and whether our ed specs are...
Enough of a balance of a CTE wheel of offerings.
Right. But again, you can have CTE classes in regular master, depending on what...
Which program, yes.
But some definitely require specialized space. And then thinking about Benson within that, it's what are the capital-intensive and really more in-depth programs in each of those six areas that we might want to do in...
One school for the...
For the entire district, that's one model.
The kinds of programs you can't easily replicate.
Right. And the, the challenge is, and it's even in, I think, districts who are further down the road is, a lot of freshman kids haven't figured out what they want to do. And our current model with Benson is, if you, if you don't know that when you're applying, you know, applying for high school, you might wake up as a sophomore and go, oh, yeah, I like this hammer. And you might miss out depending on whether or not your school has a construction-type program or not. And so that's, that's what we have to wrestle with.
And we have really short timelines, so we're not going to be able to consider at all in time to meet...
So we need to have a really, you know, direct dialogue about the process of development of the ed specs and specifically what direction, first of all, what recommendations you want to offer to us and what direction you feel like you need back from the board.
It's definitely going to be multiple steps and some of, some of what we're talking about will occur over time, over the years.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that decisions around Benson don't, aren't, are going to, are going to put us in a position that doesn't fit with the broader portfolio. So some of it's mutually exclusive, some of it isn't.
It seems like in the short term, just following that thread to go, like, move ahead to the stuff that's not mutually exclusive. Raise the standards, you know, fill in, I mean, look at this Alliance Benson like nothing.
Right.
You know, do a little bit of the balancing, so that they concurrent.
Why don't Alliance kids at Benson have access to...
It's crazy.
It's terrible.
It's crazy.
Especially because we know that, we know that CTE is, you know, huge for home alternative schools.
So we have staff have been asking that question since arriving in the district.
Is there an answer?
And Alliance at Meek has great CTE stuff going on.
Small, but they have some.
There's some, I mean, relative to the size of their...
There hasn't been an answer that's definitive, except for that's just the way we do it here. And it has to do with the scheduling and the numbers of kids who are already in there. But I think that what we need to decide, for example, deciding the equity question, if we know that is the commitment of the board to make these things accessible, if we have Alliance in the school because we're not going to have enough kids for 1,700 kids there right away, but we can put a program there where we can reconnect kids to those, why wouldn't we do that? That's a way to meet that equity.
So it raises the question of, when we, when we talked in the beginning around a high school portfolio and CTE programming as a district, are we, are we open to the idea that a student can have a home campus who might be interested in a specific CTE strand that specializes, offered on another campus that they can avail themselves to?
And there, I can answer that. We have that right now. We've had it for decades. Any student in the district can apply and come to Benson. And in living memory, only one has done that. It was a very bright, motivated young woman from Franklin who was bound and determined to go through the automotive program. And she did that, but that was, that's the only one.
Students do not know that that opportunity is available to them.
And I'm not sure, I don't know if we have... Not effectively. Transportation and all those...
Well, I was going to say that there's issues around equity of ability.
It is not effectively available to students now.
But you can't offer all CTE programming at every high school. So there have to be some guiding principles that are going to be helpful in us being able to make a recommendation, you know, on questions like these.
But, but when you're posing a question like that, this is back to my question about, talk to us a little bit about national best practices. So when you're talking about students being able to access certain programs at Benson, what are the models? Are you talking about, you know, in the afternoon after a course of study at their home high school? Are you talking about, you know, ju, just junior and senior year or sophomore, junior, senior year? I mean, there are a variety of different ways.
We've got an A/B schedule.
I was just going to say, I mean, we've, we've kind of brainstormed out there around, you know, even during the swing space conversation, you have an A/B schedule that actually affords you a different model that you could put into play for students being able to access on other campuses, unique programming. So there are different ways that districts play CTE. You know, some do the regional hub model. Some, when they don't have scale, they partner with other districts and they create that kind of a setting, you know. Others do the comprehensive and they offer a wheel of CTE programming, three or four. If, since arriving, have heard that Benson, you know, we want it to be the rigorous, comprehensive, and we want to have more offerings in CTE there than you might find in a typical comprehensive as part of its legacy. So I, if that's not the case, then that's important too. If it's going to have a similar balance that any other high school would have, then that's important direction to receive.
It can be helpful to begin to frame out some guiding principles. That answers the question. Because you can build out successful programs that are limited by things like what Joe was saying and still have successful programs. But what guides those decisions? And that's where I think is a miss. And so, because that can help in the short term and in the long term. So if, if one of them has to do with equity, what's, what's the guiding principle around equity that we need to answer so that we can actually then say, the programs in PPS have characteristics of the element that is, they pay attention to this, they build around. So what are, and there are several, several themes that would guide setting up those principles that we would land on in the short term that we could and then use those to begin to define the CTE programs moving forward, absent an awful-blown audit of that, that's at some national guidelines.
So I would say it would be helpful, Director Anthony, because probably of the seven board members, you have got the most intimate understanding of the history of Benson and so many of the conversations around there. If you're hearing and you're, you've been forming a concept for the future, that, that would be a helpful starting point for us to chew on. I'd love to hear that. I know the team would love to hear that.
Sure.
Because probably have logged hundreds of hours more than we have on this topic.
Yeah. And I've written it up, they have it, I'll make sure you have it.
Can you share that with the board?
Yeah, sure.
This is a manifesto about Benson.
So I think along the lines of Director Anthony's vision would be, again, a conversation around, is our intention to go with Benson designed as a comprehensive high school that has the CTE programs that the other schools have and then more CTE? Or is it going to be different CTE programs than the other schools? And are we open to looking at a hub model, even if it's not Benson? You know, somewhere along the line or down the road, do we want to examine a hub model? And so that's some of the direction because I think Director Anthony's proposal has the addition of quite a few programs. So would that look like then taking out... So would that look like then taking out some of the programs that are duplicated across the district? Or is Benson the CTE high school because it has double the offerings of any other high school? So that's some of the direction that I think would be kind of helpful or help with some of this conversation in the programming.
So I guess for me, I am not as familiar with CTE as secondary has been my focus area for a while. I don't really know the benefits, the cost imperatives across a hub model and the other models. So how then, and what's the timeline for us to be able to get that kind of education to help us make some of these decisions out? And I'll just speak for myself. It might be only me that needs it. I don't know.
It's not just you.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I was going to ask. Like, give me, I need, I need basic, basic. I need, you know, what's out there? What are the models that are out there? What are the pros? What are the cons?
Yeah.
What are the costs? What are the benefits?
Also back to Julie's question about enrollment. And we all know what, that Benson has been a relief valve for a long time for people fleeing their neighborhood schools, still is to a certain degree. So show, we need to look at it in the context of our total enrollment.
Well, and that's another value we need to know about from the board, is there consensus on the board that we don't want kids to flee. So do we build a model that includes things that keep kids at their home high school?
Which we actually already have done to a large extent by building that.
But the marketing has changed.
So if we've done that, why would we want to dismantle that? I mean, we want kids to stay in their Deveraux bus neighborhood choices.
Okay, so-
For me, that's a huge fundamental question though we have to answer before we move ahead because-
Most of our trips that we were giving off were standard.
If the concept is we're getting, if we're going to build it as a-
I can't hear both. Sorry.
If we're going to build it as a 1,700 student comprehensive, even if it's phased, that has huge implication for the rest of our system.
For a very, very, very long time.
Right. So and to think like, we're going to make that decision in the next, you know, three or four months. I say this isn't just a question about Benson potentially, it's a question about four or five of our high schools. And I'm concerned that we need some sort of structure and process to be able to make those decisions. Because when we sat in this room, when we were working on the bond and I raised the issue about the enrollment plan, it's totally informal, this whole like, well, we're not really hurting Madison or Roosevelt, but the numbers totally don't show that.
Right.
This isn't just a conversation about Benson, it's about all the rest of our high, about four of our other high schools as well.
I could maybe just, to Julie's point, just also share that when you examine the high school numbers and how they've been growing, okay, there's a direct correlation to the new construction. Okay, we've seen students returning to schools. When Franklin opened, we saw over 100 students return from private schools. Okay. At Roosevelt, okay, kids are coming down the street from Nellis Al-Norzal. I mean, so if you take that thinking, you apply it forward to Benson and Madison and Roosevelt, you've got one school in the middle of all of that that doesn't see any influence coming in the near future. It's going to be deeply impacted.
Which one?
Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Well, I don't think Madison, I mean, if you just looked at the numbers where the students come from, it's-
Benson's already over 100 this year, more.
But they still got about another 600 to-
Yeah, they got room for more.
But if they're coming to a centralized space, I mean, when I went to Washington High School, that's where all the boys that wanted to get out of Washington High School, they all went to Benson. Because that was the boys' school and that was the relief valve. I mean, it has been during no child left behind. That's why we got to put the cap on it because everybody could, had the ability to transfer because it was the only open transfer school.
And still, the trend has not changed in 10 years of how many kids are going from Lincoln to Benson?
True.
Yeah.
So I don't know, and I don't know if this is a question I should even ask, but is it, is it too late to consider the conversation, especially in light of CTE? And since we're considering the phasing at Benson, do you phase in the size of Benson and focus on what we're going to do first while you're also enhancing Jefferson and some of the other programs so they keep their students until we have enough need to fill more? Or even have a place for special programs like Alliance to be able to have access to what would be at Benson?
When you say do you phase in, you mean do you consider building Benson smaller and investing in CTE at the other high schools earlier than previous days?
Well, if you're going to have to phase it in anyway, I'm just wondering if it's an opportunity to kind of do both, right? So that you're considering both CTE, the enrollment in all schools and the fact that, I mean, I don't even know if we've made the decision, are we phasing Benson?
Still a lot on the table.
Oh, okay. So I-
Well, it seems like Benson also should be the place where there's, like, where you need economies of scale.
Right.
So some programs don't take a lot of capital equipment or-
Space.
Space and things like that, but it seems like, okay, we shouldn't be replicating these big complex strands at every high school. It seems like that's our natural sort of competitive advantage that Benson would have is having that versus we're going to have the same as all the other high schools, but we're just going to have-
So they would have the programs that you couldn't have at those other schools because of space need and equipment need.
And, you know, the other way we could address this is how we admit students to Benson. If you don't like what the lottery is doing, we could go back to merit-based applications. And when Benson did that, it was sucking an awful lot of kids out of work and was-
Unless they're not applying.
Well, you make it competitive.
But is it equitable?
That's the thing.
So we have major urban districts today sort of wrestling with that question right now around admissions that's merit-based. So we'll need to have a clear stance on, but that's even an option for us.
Current legal issue.
And that.
So I was on the board when we got rid of the standard. And part of it was a lot of the focus schools, like from kindergarten through 12, had a lot of special criteria that you had to be like a super parent to be able to navigate to get your kid into programs or- And so when we looked at what are all the barriers, whether it was transportation, you know, letters of recommendation, GPA, a lot of the requirements basically had the effect of denying kids access to programs. And so part of the rationale of getting rid of the standard was to allow more kids to have access to the program and not just certain kids. I think there were some unintended consequences, but that was sort of the rationale of why you didn't have to have three-
Why I'm saying equity is the big issue.
Yeah.
Benson is giving an awful lot of poor Eastside kids options for different kinds of learning, different kinds of careers, lots of opportunities. And I don't want to see that narrative.
Okay, can I, I want to do a time check. It's 10:33. We're not going to solve this tonight, so what, we need a plan for a plan.
What kind of direction do you need and-
Now what? I mean, what are the next steps? How do we get from point A to point B?
I'm concerned about the development of the EdSpecs for Benson and, you know, how much conversation do we need to have between the staff recommendations and the policy level considerations that feed into making sure that we come up with EdSpecs for what we really envision as a premier 21st century? Because we're looking at potentially building the most expensive high school in the United States to date. Right now, that's where we're headed. And so if we're really going to do that, we've got to make it great. Well, we've got to make it great anyway. But, you know, this is, this is the crunch. This, you know, we just, we're already looking down the barrel of the timeline as far as going into schematic design, but we don't have-
The program.
The program identified. I mean, we do pieces, but so how do we get there?
I know. We're going to need some time and a work session that doesn't start after a board meeting.
Oh, we're going to need more than one work session.
Well, this is an important start as a group to really sort of see how complex and interrelated these issues are. I think, you know, identifying what those guiding principles are is good, helps give the direction, you know, to come up with option A, B, C.
Okay, so where do we, what's the next step? I mean, this is, this is all kind of, everything's connected to everything. So-
So to back up on the dates-
How are we going to figure out, you know, some reasonable way to tackle this in a very accelerated timeline?
Seems like there's some key questions that need to be answered. And so having an opportunity to sort of work through that and sort of key questions that are fundamental not only to CTE generally, but concurrent planning for Benson?
So I would suggest that we take the, your comments and questions and some of the things from the earlier board meeting and we come up with a list of those really important questions that we then get your insight in. And then we can take that back, regroup, come back with some recommendations that then we have another conversation around your thoughts on those recommendations is where I would maybe suggest we go next.
Okay, so what would the next thing be?
For us to bring you those hard questions that we're going to have to make decisions on.
Questions that would help you articulate what your guiding principles are so that we could then come back with a proposal that meets the guiding principles that you would come up with.
It seems like what needs to be combined with is what Rita asked for, which is sort of this-
What's out there?
What's, yeah.
What are the options?
Yeah.
So those three questions that are back there, we thought could be great conversation starters. And we sort of played around them, but we never really got to thinking about those things because from there could emerge some, the question of equity is embedded in there, but we never really addressed that, right? So those three questions could be a place for us to begin to take what you've said and begin to fill that in and bring them back to the table. I think in the short term, what should emerge as, well, we've talked about, is a set of guiding principles that we can then work off of to begin to build out concrete steps that we could take in working to the design in the short term. In the long term, it would be part of the entire audit around what are the national standards around CTE?
Can I, I want to go back to what Scott was talking about. So am I correct? I interpreted what you were saying as there are kind of two basic ways to look at this. One is through a sort of industry-based or occupational-based framework. And the other is the kind of, you know, the mix of interests and skills and all that.
And they both, they both have their uses.
And my question, so I started Googling it, is there a way to do both?
Are those competing or are those intersecting?
I don't, I don't think they're totally competing. I think it just gets down to when you start to decide what are the experiences that every PPS student should have? I think you're going to decide, you're going to have to decide, is it these characteristics? Or is it that you want them to be prepared for jobs? And maybe it's different by levels or something too. So those are some things that maybe we can take a look at what other places are doing and come back. Because I don't know what they are, but she does.
I just want to, I just want to say this out loud. You know, we're about to embark on this whole visioning thing where we're supposed to be dreaming about what's going to happen, you know, 30 years from now, which I think we need to do more than 12. But, I mean, and I think what's screaming at us is we don't know what the jobs are going to be. So I worry about pitching everything towards, you know, these graphs about what the jobs are going to be, you know, for our graduates. You know what I'm saying?
And in the case of Benson, Benson has evolved enormously. It used to teach blacksmithing, hobbling, all kinds of things-
Or shilling.
Yeah, a hundred years ago. Have run away. And the building was built with enough flexibility in it-
Right.
That they've been able to change it. And we're working really hard at getting the same thing.
Okay, so the initial designs have a really flexible approach.
The nice Jen Som over there, she's working real hard at it. Yeah. Now, Aurora, along with this, one thing I wanted to ask, I had thought we were going to be discussing more about whether or not we were going to actually use these national categories or not? Are we committed to the career clusters?
So this is just a national standard, right? I really, the goal was to bring you the information so that you could guide us on, right? If we want to throw out the national standards and-
I think Mr. Benson would be happy.
Well, I don't think we need to throw that out.
But the other reason we showed you the funding streams is that some of that comes with some strings and some expectations, right? So when you looked at the completers and the pathways, just having been in some of the front end stuff for the last 10 years in this state, trying to get standardized about some things so that we could have some agreement on what our pathway, so that kids could get credits for them. So they counted for something even as they went on to PCC and other things. So I would caution us against taking kind of a total sort of free-for-all creative wave that's not tied to a national standard, please. We're just moving us to GVC.
Okay. Okay, so you've got something in your head about the next step, right? Do you have a deadline in mind? We need to know, because we're going to have to schedule things out and it's going to have to be a very accelerated schedule, timeline. So how soon do you think you can come back with the next step? You can get back to us.
Okay. Given that she's going tomorrow to go get married.
She's getting married on Saturday, so she leaves tomorrow.
How long are you going to be out? I'll be back next Tuesday.
She's saving her honeymoon for when she has time.
So how about we also work the modernization team?
Come back, come back to us with some timeline in mind. Because we're going to have, I'm going to forecast this for the rest of the board. We were looking at the schedule, we are going to lose four weeks worth of work between the-
Council?
The council meeting, Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Well, why don't we just schedule different dates?
So we will likely, we will likely have to schedule work sessions on different dates and probably four of them. So I'm just letting you know. And, you know, at least some of those, I'm guessing, will be about this.
Okay.
So.
We'll be ready.
Well, I'm going to the council meeting so I can have my own work session and redesign Benson.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Julie and I will do it.
Best job.
So I, I think you, I just want to check. I think we will want to see a compare and contrast between Benson as a comprehensive and Benson as an A/B open office.
Yeah, like a co-op.
And pros and cons, what's that looks like?
Boy, and a hybrid.
Or both.
Let's see.
Yeah, yeah, that was- Yeah, that was...
And we'll share with you some more questions. And Paul, if you have a manifesto that you can circulate, can you share it with us? Okay, awesome.
And if you think of questions you want...